I call this meeting of the Alexandria County Board of Commissioners to order. It is November 2, 2020, and tonight, leading us in the invocation will be Commissioner Ronnie Reese, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Vice Chairman Larry Yoder. If you would please rise.
Before we pray, let's have a moment of silence in remembrance of Darryl Robertson and his past. Father, we come to you to see and we thank you for this day. Would you continue to bless us? Would I pray for protection over our citizens of our county, county employees, and all our emergency departments and services, each one? Would you protect them? Father, I ask you to watch over our meeting tonight, give us wisdom as we make decisions that would move Alexandria County forward. Would I pray for each one that's here as this meeting comes to a close? Give us a safe journey back home. Would I just ask that you would help us direct our minds? Would we pray for all these things that are going on across our country and our land? Or for this virus that you would give us speedy removal across our land, all things are in your control? Or I just ask that we would seek you, or look to you for our direction and guidance? Pray for this election, for our nation, for each person. And, Lord, I thank you for being born in the United States of America, where it's still the greatest place on earth. And, Lord, you blessed it. You blessed us all extremely. Would we continue to thank you for that with all these things we ask in your name? Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know we've got these masks on. Chad, will you give me the thumbs up if you can hear us? Okay, okay, all right, great. Before we go on to the Commissioners' Report, as Commissioner Reese said, Alexandria County lost a great person yesterday, Darryl Robertson. I served with him for many years here as a member of this commission. He taught me a lot of things, and I appreciate it. He was always well-prepared for his meetings. He remembered things that, you know, from numbers and figures from the decade before. He serves on this board for 17 years, and he also served as Alexandria County's first county engineer, and he did a great job at that. His profession was, he was a professional engineer, licensed engineer. But Alexandria County owes him a debt of gratitude, and so do we. And, ah, I'll say, one thing Darryl did teach me that I still do is I carry this red pen with me every meeting. So, that was from Darryl. But I know Larry Yoder wants to say a few words, too.
Thank you, Chairman. Served a lot of time with Darryl, and I'll never forget the first time that I was elected as County Commissioner. Darryl Robertson took me out to the side, and one of the things he said to me was, point-blank, when you learn that being a county commissioner is not the most important thing in the world, you be a fine and good commissioner. And he was right about that. And he always reminded me that the number-one objective of a county commissioner was to set the budget, and that's what we do. Darryl was an outstanding commissioner. He was involved. As Commissioner, as Chairman Mayberry stated, I did not know of a single time that Darryl Robertson ever came to a meeting that was not planned, and he did not study and know everything that was going on. He could remember things back. He could work across the aisle. He worked with Democrats, Republicans. It didn't make any difference. Once he was elected, he did the job as a county commissioner. Not only that, he was an outstanding citizen in Stony Point, an outstanding citizen in this county. He did a lot to help the Stony Point Fire Department, the Stony Point Ruine, Stony Point Masonic Lodge, his church, his family. He served well. He served with honor. He served with dignity, and he served with honesty. And I couldn't think of a better person in the world that I'd want to serve time with in any committee or anything than Darryl. He was very straight-up. He was straightforward. And I remember whenever I fell off the roof and broke my leg, and I'd be there, I was there at the house, and Darryl showed up. I thought he was just bringing a couple sandwiches. And he bought a Boston butt and a turkey breast, made sure that we had food, and made sure that I was there and had something to eat at lunch, and come by and check on me. And he's always called me. I talked to Darryl several times and talked to him about different things, and we always stayed in touch. Fine, outstanding citizen in this community, his family, and those people that he was close to are going to miss Darryl Robertson, a fine, outstanding citizen, and a man of honor. And, you know, he's gone to a better place. And the only thing I can say is pray for the family, and God bless Darryl Robertson and his family.
Commissioner, Mayberry, if I could please, you guys have certainly done a good job of remembering Darryl, and I'd just like to say I'm thankful that Darryl was my friend, person I've knew as long as I've been in Alexandria County. Just a great guy. We lost a, we lost a good one. Darryl's a good man. We'll move on to the Commissioners' Report. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to report on?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make this statement tonight. I was told in the Transportation Committee meeting this week and through the Western Peamont Council governments that the state of North Carolina will start working on the Liledown Road this week.
Amen.
And they are supposed, that's what I say, yay! But Mark Stafford, who's the engineer over the Division 12, and another gentleman, I don't remember his name because I left the paperwork late at the house because I had a couple phone calls, and I wanted to have it there just in case somebody called me and I could give them their names. But anyway, at this meeting, they said that they was going to start on it this week. However, with the storm damage and everything, I'm going to say it may be a couple days before they start because of all the damage that's been done in our county. As most of you know, I think at one time, I'm not going to get into that, Mr. Gillespie's going to cover that. But they are trying to do that. They're going to do everything they can to have it finished before the end of the year. If not, it will be finished by January, is what they told me. And I had three different peoples at the meeting, and if you go back and you look at the Western Peamont Council government, the transportation meeting was broadcast on Facebook, and they did put it out there, and if you want to see it or look at it at any time, then you can go through the Western Peamont Council governments and be able to see it. But that information is out there, and that's what they shared with me in the transportation meeting.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to put in a little plug. You know, we had a pretty good storm that came through last week, and a lot of people without power. It was, my power was out for a pretty good while. And I thank all of our EMS and all those who answered the calls. I think it was overwhelming, seemed like 425 or 30 calls that our communications center received just on that one day. And as far as I know, each one of them was answered, and, you know, everything is kind of getting back to normal. But I thank for the guys that climbed the pole and rode the bucket truck to get our power back on and get things removed even in the middle, you know, of a storm. And it's, it was kind of strange, I thought. I'm probably maybe the second-oldest guy on this board, but I can't remember, you know, hurricane or tropical storm winds coming through, you know, in October. But, you know, we, 2020 just keeps on giving, but I wanted to give a shout to those that helped us out. Thank you.
I'm ready for it to stop giving.
All right, thank you. Any, anybody else have anything? All right, well, I'll just mention, this is my last county commissioners' meeting, and I've sat on this board for 12 years. It has been, it's been a lot of hard work. It's been a lot of joy. I have thoroughly enjoyed most of it. There's been some times where it's, it's been trying, but I appreciate everybody I've worked for, worked with, the clerk, Jamie Starnes, do an outstanding job, Jamie, thank you for all you do, our county manager, Rick French. You guys just don't know how hard he works on keeping this county moving forward. So we appreciate everything you do, and I do, too. And all the guys there in the back, Josh, Doug, Bill, you guys, you know, you run your departments, our registered deeds here, Scott Hines, Jack Sims, he's with the town, of course, and Bud and Judy Kaywood, you're, you're here a lot, and we appreciate you taking your time out and informing the community of what happens. And Micah from the newspaper, Leann, you're hiding back there. You've got a, got a lot to take care of, especially with coronavirus, and you've done an outstanding job. And all our department heads, we appreciate everything you do. And I have just, I've learned a lot. I hear Larry laughing over there. People think they know kind of what the job entails, but you don't. And it takes you about four years to really get a good, good idea of everything that's happening. And so it's, it's something that's worthwhile. I wish more people would, you know, get involved with it, and, you know, maybe you don't want to run, be a county commissioner, but, you know, get on a board or a committee. We've got a great community, great bunch of people, and it has been, I'm going to choke up. It's been an honor to be here. It's been an honor to serve with you guys, and especially Larry. Larry's been here with me, you know, about the whole time, so.
All but two years.
All but two years. And it's, and Darryl.
Yep.
Spent a lot of time with Darryl. So I appreciate all you guys and all the other commissioners I've served with, and it's been my honor. So, thank you. We'll move on. The adoption of the agenda is before you. I know we do have one addition. I'd like to add to 1A will be a storm presentation by Doug Gillespie, our EMS director. Any other additions, deletions? None? Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with the addition of adding 1A.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No. All right. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number one on the agenda is a public comment, and no one has signed up for a public comment. So we will move on to item 1A, which is the storm presentation, and I call on Doug Gillespie, our EMS director.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the work you've done. I know you've worked with EMS, and I've known you for a few years also, Mr. Mayberry. But I just wanted to give a, just to get in and give a brief synopsis of what occurred on Thursday with the remnants of what we call Tropical Storm Zeta. I don't know if we get any more, what we're going to name it or anything like that. First of all, we want to thank the volunteer organizations. Our eight fire departments and one rescue squad, I think they were the team for the day. They were out and about the whole time, so I want to give them a thanks. And I know Russell Green has said it multiple times, and I'm going to say it again, that I would compete any of our volunteer fire departments with any around the United States. They were out and about, cutting trees down. They were doing everything they could. I also want to give some of the other departments a thank you. Sheriff and Police Department, Department of Social Services, 911 Communication, as Mr. Reese was saying, 427 calls were received and processed from 8:00 in the morning to 16:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. Plus, we took some of that burden off of them in our office with working with the fire departments to run our command, to dispatch them to other fire, other calls that they needed with trees and service, power lines down for service. The North Carolina Forestry Service helped us out a lot. Of course, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Josh and his maintenance department, EMS, of course, my office at the Public Service or Public Safety, and of course, Alexander County, our Community Emergency Response Team also assisted with that. Just a little brief overview, like I said, 911 Communication, 427 911 and non-911 calls, and that's in a nine-hour timeframe. We look at it, as of noon, when we did our first study, there was over 10,000 people out of power. And as of 5:00 this afternoon, there is less than 50 that are out of power. And about 20 of those were not due to tropical storm damage or anything like that. We had five homes with structural damage due to trees and then power lines on those homes, and we also had one due to a gas leak where there was a small explosion. Multiple roads were blocked and closed off due to power lines, and we also had one road in the Ellendale area that was closed off due to water flowing over the road, which we have seen multiple times in this area. Around five residents were without access, and you can see some of the pictures here. Around five residents in the Ellendale community were without access, so our teams worked together with the forestry service and actually built a footbridge. Friday afternoon was completion date, and then we had access with four-wheelers and other different routes to get to the other residence itself. We did build another footbridge to, well, correction, we didn't build it. We, we got a small footbridge, and it'll be on the last picture, that we borrowed from a county so this person could get across the gully to actually help that out itself. Ellendale Fire Department, our DSS, and our Alexander County CERT, was set up a shelter. We had about five people in that shelter for a period of time, and then after about four or five hours, the shelter was, was shut down due to everybody found other access or found ways to get to a residence where they could be at itself. So we definitely want to thank our DSS for that. We have, in the sense the storm and the power went out, EMS and myself have gone out and got oxygen to 10 people and provided them oxygen for three or four days now before their power came back in, because that's what they thrive off of and they have to have. And we also did it for one mechanical device for a patient that needed it. Like I said, again, I want to thank the personnel that helped during the weather event. There was a lot of them. If I didn't get a chance to say thank you in person, I want to say thank you now. And anything else, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Lambert Fork seems to have a lot of trouble by every big storm, don't they?
The, the footbridge that we put on today, as I talked to the young lady, and I talked to her Friday night for about 45, 50 minutes, this will be her third bridge that she put So, yeah, in that area, that is, is, is pretty bad in sections. That's where our, our main damage was for access to the patients. We, before I left Thursday afternoon, we had access to everybody that we could if we needed it in a medical emergency, working with communications and the ATV team for the rescue squad. That one's hard to see, but that's the, the footbridge that we got from, I think it was Avery County today. It's just a aluminum-style footbridge. It comes in sections, and we're going to try to look to see where they got it, and maybe look at working on a grant to get a one or two of those. It's about 96-foot sections, and you can break it off into the sections you need.
Did, did, and I know we're talking about Alexandria County, but did Wilkes County get more rain than we did?
The rain totals, I think, were pretty much equal. They just had certain areas, they had to evacuate a long-term facility because of water damage and stuff and water problems. But Wilkes County wasn't as bad. I think Catawba County and Alexander County, we both declared a state of emergency, thanks to your help and our wonderful clerk's help and Mayor Holloman and stuff. So we are working on the declaration, public declaration assistance and stuff like that at this time. That's, that's going to take a few weeks to work on, but we've done a window assessment on Friday. My guys were out again early Friday and doing window assessments for all the structures to make sure. We did have one, one unsafe home, and I forgot to add one on to the list, and forgive me, Bill, but we did use planning and inspections because he did come out and do an inspection real quick because the home was deemed unsafe.
Right. No injuries, though, right?
No injuries that we're aware of, no from first, or fire departments or anything like that. We did have, you know, multiple accidents, but there was no critical injury in those accidents or anything like that. We did have some damage to some vehicles at the fire departments, but nothing real major to note.
All right. Well, Douglas, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
You've done a great job. Thanks for all your hard work, and all the rest of the people out there, our first responders, Sheriff's Department, police, and EMS, we appreciate all you do, and those community volunteers and fire departments.
Thank you.
Doug, I'll ask one question if you don't mind, please.
Yes, sir.
This Lambert Fork, I know it continues to flood every time something major happens. And I know there's some places that things can be done and they can't be done. Has there any assessment been done from the last storm that we had that was major, where we had so much damage, and a lot of the trees and stuff were in the creeks and beds? I know that we'd put in for the, they put in for an application for a grant to try to help clean up some of that. Do we know whether or not that the damage that was still there may have helped cause or to increase the damage that was done this time?
I do not see, in the, the areas that I looked at on Lambert Fork, and that was the first probably half a mile to two miles, or a mile in, I didn't see it was damaged from other objects that was left into the river. Now Dover Church Road is a little bit different story, you know, and I can't estimate it how much it would cost to actually get in to get some of that debris and stuff out, and it's mostly trees and stuff like that. A lot of this is the bridges, I think, need to be somewhat engineered before they put them in, instead of putting in a big culvert and then just throwing some pavement and makes concrete. I noticed one bridge that we gained access to, another house that we were getting in, I don't think this bridge was going anywhere. And he had set it up where water goes over plus goes through it to help take that burden away. We actually used one of the bridges last, the last storm, one of the footbridges last storm, the last storm, we actually used the poles off of it to build the footbridge that we have down there now. So, but that's going to be an extensive study, and we're going to look at some data and some statistics to see what maybe we could do to help them out, to see what we, what we can do, you know. I think that's going to be in millions and millions of dollars.
I'm sure that, you know.
And I think working with Russell and one of the last storms we talked about, at one point, the Corps of Army Engineers come in and actually cleaned out that area up in there in the creeks and the rivers and stuff like that.
You know, up through Lambert Fork and Never Mountain and through there, that, I mean, that's, that's cleaning through there, the.
Yeah.
You know, down on the, up near Stout Farm off of Zeb Watts, that's got a lot of debris on it where a lot of problems were last time. But some of these pictures here, that, that's just as clean as it could be there.
Yeah, and you can see that.
Big fields on both sides.
That's the, the pipe that come out of that one right there that you see beside, beside the picture that come out. So it was a forceful amount of water coming through, but like I said, that one bridge, that water was, he was just right up above that one, and his didn't have any damage or anything like that.
Good.
So he had a low-water bridge that took water over it?
Took water over it, plus it took water under it and stuff, and it was, it was very safe, well-maintained.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, item number two on the agenda, public hearing, proposed fiscal year '22, call for projects, federal section 5310 grant, call on Lee Ann Wisnitz, Health and Human Services Director.
Thank you, sir. This is the federal section 5310 grant, enhances mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities. This is the grant we apply for every year. You're very familiar with it. The goal of section 5310 program is to improve the mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities throughout the country by removing barriers for transportation services, expanding the transportation mobility options available. Toward this goal, FTA provides financial assistance for transportation services planned, designed, and carried out to meet the special transportation needs of seniors and individuals with disabilities in all areas. A senior is considered an individual who is 65 years of age or older. The term disability is defined in section 31 of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. The section 5310 program provides grant funds for capital and operating expenses to recipients for public transportation projects planned and designed and carried out to meet the special needs. Public transportation projects that exceed the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Public transportation projects that improve access to fixed route services, decrease reliance on complimentary pair transits, alternatives to public transportation projects that assist those seniors and individuals with disabilities with transportation. The period for this 5310 grant will be July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. The individual program totals are, the entire grant is $194,005.92. The federal part is $155,673. There is a local match of $19,460, with a state match of $19,459. And the Department of Social Services currently operates this grant for the current year.
Anyone having questions?
We've got to open the air.
Yes. So we'll go ahead and I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of opening a public hearing, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Nope? Okay. Then I will make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Is there to be none? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item number three, Bethlehem Sewer Project Update. We've got Dan Shabaldine from Shabaldine Engineering here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it is an honor and a pleasure to be before you again this evening to talk about the Bethlehem Sewer Project. I think we all know how important this is to the Bethlehem community, and I just want to let you know that it is going well. I've given you a progress report, and I think, I hope you had an opportunity to look through it, but we got two crews still working. Crew number one, as we did last time, they finished the bore, 36-inch, still casing bore under 127, came up the hill above Evans Drugs and boarded Chigger Ridge, which DOT is requiring us to bore. And then they, they made good progress there and have continued up and over the ridge. They're down by Davis Cove Road at this time. It's been a challenge this last week for them because they've encountered rock, and I don't know if you've been by there or not, but they have a hammer hoe out there beating the rock, and, and they're down about 13 feet deep at that intersection. But they are making good progress. Excuse me. Crew number two, they're the ones over in, on Rink Dam Road and Highway 127. They've bored Highway 127 there at Mount Pisgah, the Dollar General store, and they've come up Shallow Church, what we call Shallow Church North, have completed that section of the road, and have actually completed the west side of Rink Dam Road, west of Highway 127. And they also bored underneath 127 there at Highway, at Rink Dam Road there at the vault. And they've made their way around the corner there at the, at the vault, and you still see their equipment sitting there. see their equipment sitting there. The crew number two has actually been slowed down a bit, they've, the whole crew was tested positive for COVID, so they were off for about three weeks. They're now getting back, started back this week, and they're starting to lay pipe again. The weekly progress report that I provided you, we updated it today, but we're about 50% complete with the line work and about 60% into the contract. And as I say in the progress report, that's not a concern of the scheduling because once we get through the gravity sewer part, we'll be moving on to the force main for line work, and they should complete that relatively quick, so I fully anticipate that they'll make up any, any, any scheduled ground on the force main part of the project. We still have the one change order that's, that needs to be approved, and that's the manhole replacement, some service connections, extending the bore, and as I mentioned before, we went back and negotiated with DOT and were able to open cut several roads where we had designed and permitted as bores, which would save the county a significant amount of money. In the next 30 days, we expect that the crew number one's going to continue laying pipe up Chigger Ridge Road. We think that they should be done with that probably by Thanksgiving, that they'll have to be up at the north end and finish Chigger Ridge Road. Crew number two will be, they're back pretty much at full strength, laying pipe this week. They're going to finish Rink Dam East, which goes up to just about PJ's, and they should be done with that in the next week or two. And they'll be ready to move on to the next segment, which may be either the force main or, there is some gravity that's still out there that may be done. I don't know if, sorry, I just don't know if we put the map up there that actually shows you where all the line work is, but we'll move on to the pictures. I know there's been a lot of comparisons to the sewer job with some of the other work that's been done in the county utility work wise. And I've mentioned in the past that the sewer project is complicated, it's difficult, and I think some of these pictures I will present to you tonight are a good indication of that. This is the manhole at the top of Chigger Ridge, manhole 17, manhole 15 actually, which is, if you're coming up from 127, winding up Chigger Ridge right before you get to the crest of the hill, we set a manhole at the top, and this one is, well, as it says there, it's 24 feet deep. The excavation's about 25 feet in order to set, to place the stone and then to set the manhole. So, you can see it's quite a significant and impressive excavation, actually. Everything went well, they were able to get the pipe in and the manhole in, backfill and compact, so everything really went well with this one I was, this one was the one I was looking forward to, and it really went well. The next picture is, what I wanted to show here is, this is manhole 17 on the other side of Chigger Ridge as you go over the crest and head back down toward Davis Cove Road. This one also is a 25-foot excavation. In order to complete this excavation, you can see they're having to, it's almost like a bucket brigade. The lower excavator can, it's all, he had to bench down in order to get down to the bottom of the excavation. He's, he's excavating the soil, stockpiling it above the excavation, and there had to be another excavator at the top moving the soil and setting it over to the side as they were digging. So, this is quite an operation that they had to go through here. And again, this is just another picture of that manhole 17, just showing you how deep it is when he was benching it. And then the last picture, I just wanted to show you, this is where measuring the depth of the hole, trying to set that manhole, and this one is about 25 feet down to the bottom. So, those two manholes on Chigger Ridge were the deepest of the, of the project, and it went extremely well. There were no issues at all with that, and I was real pleased about it. And the last picture is Rink Dam Road on the west side of Highway 127. Again, this one is not as spectacular, but it shows you the utilities that they're having to work around. Some of these utilities weren't clearly marked, they find them in the field, and fortunately they found them before they actually did any damage to them, so they were able to set them aside and continue working. This is, as they're coming down the hill and making the turn there on Highway 127 to go across where the vault is. The next picture and the last one, that's the bore underneath Highway 127 in front of the vault. Again, it's, it's quite a big excavation, the width, length, and the depth, trying to get underneath Highway 127, and it went extremely well, so we were really pleased. So, haven't had any issues with the project, so making good progress. And again, they'll be done with the gravity portion of it probably in the next month or so, and then it'll be moving on to the force main, which ought to be fairly easy. All that is three feet of cover, four-foot deep excavations, mostly cross-country, so it ought to go really well. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Very informative report. Everything looks good, glad to hear everything's moving along good and down the homestretch, so.
We're down the homestretch, finally. And I'm glad of it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shabaldine. All right, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda, which is Courthouse Park and Wittenberg Access, calling Michael Norris, there he is, with McGill and Associates. And if everyone would, please, I'm not going to fuss at Dan, but everybody leave their mask on if you come up here and talk, please, so appreciate it. My father-in-law is very sick with cancer, and I can't pick this up and give it to him, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm Mike Norris with McGill. Just want to give you some, some updates on, on a couple parks that the county is pursuing and working through in, in design and planning stages. First off, Courthouse Park, front of use the master plan, and one of the, one of the things we, we were charged with as far as the, the proposed park, as, I'm going to hit some of the highlights as far as amenities go, but one of the focal features of this, this park is the performance stage, providing opportunities for performances, using this as, as public space and, and having opportunities for a variety of different activities. In addition to that, this master plan included a splash pad, playground, shelter area, game courts, and, and a trellis area for public seating and viewing. So, one of the things that we've looked at is a proposed phasing plan. The, this plan would be a phase one, which would be one of the primary elements here is the performance stage. This phase would include not only the performance stage, but also site development with regard to grading out the performance, the spectator area, along with some of the seating, pedestrian connectors allowing for ADA access, the concrete sidewalks from the existing perimeter sidewalks to this performance stage and around the surrounding areas. The, the future phases, phases would include the other elements there shown in blue. Phase one would be the red area where the, and including, including that, that spectator area, the green lawn area would be part of that phase one, but phase two would be a splash pad, playground, shelter, game courts, and all the other elements associated with, with that green area, some of the other pedestrian connectivity, making sure it's all ADA compliant. And, and so that nucleus there in that blue is the primary future phase, which would likely be done as one, one development effort instead of multiple phases. I think having that continuity there as one, one overall phase would be, would be ideal if possible. Any questions before I, I move to, to Wittenberg? Wittenberg? Let's go to the next slide. This is the overall aerial photograph of Wittenberg Access area improvements. We have two colors here, the red and the blue, signifying park development and, and ownership of those proposed developments. The red area is the Duke Energy participation with the improvements. This is a blow-up of, of this area, the, as, as you can see, the improvement's shown in red. Exciting opportunities here, the, the primary development would be a proposed swim beach, which is shown right there on the north side of, of that cove where the peninsula comes out. Restrooms, picnic shelters, redevelopment of the trail system that goes out along the peninsula with picnic areas kind of skirting that, that trail area. And there are a number of additional parking spaces that are going to be added to this, to the overall access improvements. A majority of the improvements shown there will be, will be prepared and developed by Duke Energy. The next slide shows the, the proposed county improvements, which the county will be participating in developing. This is primarily parking. Initially, there was a picnic shelter, we've reevaluated that and felt like picnic or benches along the trail might be more appropriate for this type of trail that we have here. But one of the, the bigger elements we, we've proposed is relocating the parking area along the, where the access, Wittenberg access parking area is currently. We felt like the, where it was shown initially was a lot more remote, there's not a lot of traffic there, it would be potentially a more of a, a safety issue as well as maintenance, so we felt like it would be a lot more appropriate to have that, that parking area located within the access parking area there at Wittenberg. This particular phase could be done independently of the other Duke Energy development. It could start as soon as 2020, excuse me, 2021, early 2021 is when we can anticipate that beginning implementation of the parking area and the trail and benches. Currently, Duke Energy is in their design phase for the areas in red, so we haven't been given a firm timetable schedule for when that might be completed as well as transitioning into construction for that. So, just wanted to give you a brief overview, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions really, but I do have a comment. I've actually, I live in Bethlehem, and this summer, we went out there two or three times. I took the kids out to the pier that's out on the lake there and took them fishing, and it's amazing how many people actually use that park for fishing, so I didn't realize. I thought everyone kind of, you know, just parked their boats there, and that was about it, but there's a lot of people there utilizing that park, so.
There's, absolutely, there's a lot of activity. It's a very popular park for county, both Catawba and Alexander County residents, so it'll be, I think the improvements you'll see there will be a, a real nice improvement for the community.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda is Scott Hines, our Register of Deeds. He is going to present a PowerPoint about the upgrades that's been happening at the Register of Deeds office.
Going to have to put these on. Thank you, Mr. Mayberry, and I'm sorry to see you going off the board. And I thank the Commissioners for letting me speak here, and Ms. Barnes and Mr. French, thanks for allowing me to speak here tonight. And for those who may not know who I am, I'm Scott Hines, Register of Deeds for our great county, and on behalf of my staff, Assistant Sherri Yao, and my deputies, Don Rudisell and Jonathan Barnes, I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here to provide an update on the Register of Deeds office and to provide a short briefing on the importance of my office, as well as address an issue I think needs some attention. We've been in our new office space for over a year and four months now, and I want to thank you, the Commissioners, responsible for a great decision to purchase and renovate the vacant, vacant old bank building in the middle of town. Our new services center is a valuable asset for the people of Alexander and anyone needing to use services from the nine county departments operating from there. You, the Commissioners, made a really wise judgment in developing the services center. I extend an open invitation for any citizens to come by my office, and I'll give you a tour and show you these nice renovated facilities. Now, for a look at what's happening in my office today, next slide. This chart depicts, depicts a January to December graph showing the average revenues brought into my office on a monthly basis. Revenues equals all excise taxes, recording fees, and services provided by my office. This chart shows how much revenue the Register of Deeds office generates each month on an average basis. The blue line is a nine-year average for each month, and the higher line, the red line, shows the revenue for my office that my office has taken in each month during this year. Only one month in May, as you can see, fell short of our nine-year average, but the rest of the year is well above average, and the past four months have broken records for the amount of revenues coming in. In August and September, we fell just shy of $48,000 a month, and as of Friday, October 30th, we nearly eclipsed $50,000 revenue for the month. For the first quarter of our fiscal year, which runs July, July to June, we are up over 39% over the same time period from our last fiscal year. Additionally, projecting, projecting out for the rest of the year at the current pace, my office could bring in over half a million dollars in revenue. All of this revenue means we are super busy, our average number of monthly transactions is up 20% since June. Finally, like I said, we are currently busier than we've ever been, and at the same time, and until just recently, we were short-staffed with one of my three employees out on extended leave. We were operating with 66% staffing, doing nearly 20% more activity, and that's a record activity level. My shorthanded staff, which includes a new hire in June, has performed admirably. We have a very important function for the county and for the property industry. Next, I'll speak about this importance. Next slide. My office serves very important functions, as you very well know. Here's some details about what the Register of Deeds office means to the county. Chapter 161 of the North Carolina General Statutes is central to the establishment and function of the Register of Deeds. We have over 1,500 pages of North Carolina General Statutes to read, comprehend, and implement, and to practice in our office. Our oaths of office are recorded with the clerk of court, which distinguishes us from most other county offices. Notorial powers reside in my office, and my staff and I, by virtue of our, of our roles and responsibilities, administer oaths to notary publics and others if required, which puts me and my staff in a unique position and on an equal level with judges, mayors, magistrates, the Secretary of State, and even members of the General Assembly. All employees in my office are hired and appointed by me, the Register of Deeds, and are public officers. This distinguishes them from other county employees. My office houses all records related to real property within Alexander County. Thus, my office is part of the transactional real estate process. Our recordation of documents must take place for transfer to occur and dispersments made. My office by design is placed at a greater risk for liability. In 2019, my office processed legal documents that accounted for over $125 million in land transactions in Alexander County. Also this year, I have implemented a service called Property Check, and I, I left a page on, up at your positions, and it describes Property Check, and if anybody would like information on this service after the briefing, I'll provide that to you. But anyway, what Property Check is, is a service available that can help our citizens better protect themselves from property and mortgage fraud through automated alerts. And the best part for our citizens is it's free. I hope our citizens will sign up for this free service to protect and give them peace of mind regarding their property in Alexander County. Next slide, please. My office operates in an error-free environment. This is a lofty goal, and we correct mistakes as soon as possible after the recording process. We double, triple, and even quadruple check ourselves to make sure these very important documents are as free from error as possible. documents are as free from error as possible. The consequences of poor and inaccurate recording is dire, as the Register of Deeds offices in counties surrounding us have been sued in the past, and we don't want that to happen here. Additionally, we record and maintain vital records, such as birth, death, and marriage certificates. This is an important responsibility too, since there is so much fraud and identity theft these days. We must use discretion and discernment when preparing certified copies and providing information to the public, which nefarious people could use to perpetrate identity crimes. Finally, we are self-sustaining, as our revenue generated for the county exceeds our operating expenses to include staff, wages, and salaries. In calendar year 2019, we brought in over $400,000, and like I mentioned earlier, we could eclipse half a million dollars this year if we stay on the current pace. So hopefully, I've covered how important the Register of Deeds office is and the vital work that we do for the county. Next, I'd like to bring up an issue I think is very important. Next slide, please. So you've seen how important the Register of Deeds office is for the county, and now this is really the point of my briefing. I'd like to see upgrades to the job classifications in my office. For my position as the Register of Deeds, I think the position should be upgraded from a 73 to a 77 grade, which would acknowledge the importance of the position in office and rank me on par with other important jobs in the county. Also, this is an elected position, and this position should be elevated at minimum on that status. My assistant should be on par with at least a child support agent with social services, or a school resource officer, or a geographical information systems technician. Upgrading the assistant position from a 63 to a 65 would accomplish this. Additionally, my deputies should at least be on par with animal control officer, children's librarian, or park ranger because of the importance and legal consequences of the office. Moving them from a grade 62 to a 64 would accomplish this. Next slide, please. Here's a look at the county salary classification plan and what upgrading the Register of Deeds to a grade 77 would look like. As it stands, my position is at the, currently at the same level as a social worker supervisor and a business officer. Personally, I feel the position, because of its high level of legality and importance and potential for high legal consequence, requires parity with positions such as a code enforcement officer or the assistant help director. Next slide, please. Now here's the same classification plan for my assistant, Register of Deeds, going from a grade 63 to a 65. Currently, my assistant is graded lower than the children's librarian, which is a very honorable position and one that my sister, Amy Hines Fromberger, held back in the 1980s. But from my perspective, my second-in-command, who runs the Register of Deeds office when I'm out of pocket, should at least be recognized as important as the children's librarian. Much of what we do can be compared to library services. However, in my opinion, the consequence of getting a multimillion-dollar legal document wrong are much greater than the legal consequences of the library service. Next slide, please. Finally, here's a look at my deputy Register of Deeds, going from a grade 62 to a commensurate level of grade 64. Going back to my comments about the library services, this move would put my deputies on par with the children's librarian because of their responsibilities are pretty much on par with my assistant in terms of legal consequences of the job and professional conduct. Making my deputies a grade 64 would also raise them to a parity level at which they are currently operating in line with other jobs such as admin assistant, or a park ranger, or animal control. The benefits of raising my office classification grades are many, not the least of which is recognizing the importance of the Register of Deeds office. Next slide. So how would adjusting my office classification levels be beneficial to the county? One, it makes my office equitable with other county positions. Two, as I said, it acknowledges the importance of the office. Three, it will enhance staff esprit de corps and morale within the office, which leads to number four, making it for a better work environment and improves customer experience in our office. And finally, it would result in drawing in more quality candidates to fill vacancies for the betterment of the office and the better, and to the better benefit of the county. Next, I'll look at the, how the positions in my office, including mine, have fared against rising prices and the cost of living. This graphic shows how the collective wages and salaries for all positions in the Register of Deeds office from fiscal years 2009 through 2020, which is represented by the lower blue line, stacks up against consumer price index increases over the same time period as recorded by the U.S. Department of Labor, and that's the yellow line. As you can see, my office has not kept up with the increase in consumer prices. I would say this is a significant gap, and what's even more astonishing is that our current level of combined wages and salary is lower than it was in 2009. This means the Register of Deeds is paid less now to run and manage these crucially important land and vital records for the county than we were paid 11 years ago. That is astonishing. The dotted red line on this chart shows over a $27,000 gap from what we are paid now with what we would have been paid at 2009 levels if we had kept up with consumer prices. This means that the Register of Deeds staff cannot buy similar goods and services as the staff did over a decade ago. Next slide. I don't think those circles are in the right spot, but it's supposed to be circled around the Register of Deeds office, which doesn't show on that chart. But what it is, we currently rank 19th out of 33 county departments in our total salaries and wages, placing us solidly in the lower half of departments within the county. I'd like to see us raised in this regard, which would be one way, probably the best way from my staff's perspective, in recognizing the importance of the Register of Deeds office. Our status would be raised in the county, and it would give more respect to us for the dutiful work we do on a daily basis for the county, especially now with activity level through the roof and my staff wearing themselves out. It would be a great show of doing the right thing, which you've shown as commissioners to do for our county year in and year out. And this, that's pretty much my briefing. I want to thank you for letting me tell you a little bit about the office and what we're doing, and listening to my appeal for an upgrade to the positions in my office. And unless you have any questions, this concludes my briefing.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hines?
Very informative, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. We will discuss that, and I'm sure somebody will be back with you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six on the agenda is a presentation from Mr. Bill Rogers, who is the Alexander County Chief Code Enforcement Officer. It has to do with the Ridley Ranch Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Over the past several months, the commissioners have gotten some complaints through public comment regarding Ridley Ranch Road. Mr. French, in August, assigned that project to me to see if we couldn't get a handle on what exactly is going on out there. On August 5th, I sent all the property owners out there a letter asking them to please cooperate with us and help us clean up some of the issues that were being addressed by the other property owners. And they did. They've been very cooperative with me. They've never fought me, and they did a lot of hard work. So last week, on October 19th, I thought the best way to show you exactly what's going on out there would be to photograph it from one end to the other and just let you all see what exactly is out there. It begins at the intersection of Pilgrim Church Road. When you enter Ridley Ranch Road, it's a gravel road until it becomes a legal right-of-way. And the road's in pretty poor condition, as most rural roads are. They're meant for four-wheel-drive trucks, and people out there ride their horses. As you continue down Ridley Ranch Road, you can see that the right-of-way is clear. There's no debris on it. When we come up to the first turn, where it turns east, we can go to the next slide. We come to the first residence, which is 114 Ridley Ranch Road. It's a seven acre, seven and a half acre track approximately, has multiple houses on it, farm buildings, a single-family residence, multiple buildings rather, not multiple houses. It's gated, no trespassing. There's no debris in the right-of-way. Everything is on the gentleman's property, and as with many houses in Alexander County, any farms, he's got a truck. He's got several outbuildings. That's his residence. He's got a travel trailer there, a Jeep. Again, it's marked no trespassing. Honestly can't say I went on the property to see if there's valid tags on him. The man's got a no trespassing sign. The people that live out in this area live a very rural life. Most of them don't even have electricity. They live off the grid. They just want to be left alone. That's a pickup truck and whatnot, well on his property. Doesn't seem to be offensive to the eyes. It's not being torn apart. It's on his property. That's a travel trailer against a outbuilding, which is a two-story outbuilding, and it probably would qualify for agricultural use. It appears to be some type of barn. You'll have to apologize that most of these truck pictures are taken from within a truck because there's wild dogs running in the area, and they don't like me. So as we go down, we're continuing on Ridley Ranch Road. Again, there's nothing in the right-of-way. There's no, no trash. There's no cars. Getting ready to come up to the turn, we can see the barbed wire fence as we come up. That is one of the, that is the McLeod property. That's a barbed wire fence that's been installed along their 100-and-some-odd acre tract of land. We'll continue down Ridley Ranch Road. And again, there's nothing in the right-of-way. It's clean. We keep going down. That is a primitive structure. It's a log structure. It's owned by Gloria Lynn Rogers. That structure is over 100 years old. They're trying as best they can to preserve it. Mother Nature's probably going to take it in the next few years. They're doing their best. It's a primitive structure. Nothing they would do, do to preserve it would require a building permit. It's not occupied. It's a dovetailed log home that has been there forever. It was owned by her grandfather, I believe she told me.
Is that part of the front, is that, that's new construction on the front there?
What they're doing is they're trying to, they're, they've tried to create years ago, and that, no, it's not new construction. Years ago, they tried to create a porch off the back of it, and that has done some water damage to that structure. That structure's not long for the earth. It's, it's going to go down, down to the earth. It's, they're...
How old do you say it was?
She told me it was over 100 years old.
Oh, man.
I mean, it's, it's all dovetailed, and it's got the chinkings falling out of it. You can see right through. It's, it's not in good shape at all. We'll continue down Ridley Ranch Road. Again, we don't see anything in the roadway, which was one of the number-one complaints. Those are water barrels and a pallet that is on her property. They harvest rainwater out there, and you'll see, coming up on the next slide, you'll see a rainwater system. That's her rainwater system. She harvests rainwater. She doesn't have electricity. That's a trailer she used, they used to haul off trash. You can see metal roof to a structure that's down in a ravine on her property. And if we're going down Ridley Ranch Road, the road becomes almost impassable. It's a right-of-way now. It's, you can see one of the stakes for the barbed wire fence for the McLeod property. The road is in very, very bad condition. Our four-wheel-drive trucks have a hard time on a rainy day getting in there and have a hard time on a good day getting in there. We'll continue going down. We're going to crest the hill on Ridley Ranch Road, and we're going to come up on a piece of property that is owned by Ronald E. Tilly. There's no address issued. There's a travel trailer down there. That green roof is a pole barn. Apparently, at one time, there were horses on the property. It appears to be a horse shed. We'll go down. And again, continuing on down, one of the complaints was there's a lot of debris in the right-of-way, and there's no debris in the right-of-way anymore. We're going to round the curve. That's an abandoned school bus, and I cannot find out whose property that is. Ridley Ranch Road is very hard to determine whose property's what out there. But that is down off this bank of the side of the road. That is a old rusted-out school bus. We can't determine whose it is. And we'll continue down. There's a truck in amongst those trees on someone's property. And that's the backside of the truck. That's a trailer with a water barrel or a fuel barrel on it. Again, the properties are all marked no trespassing. We're going to come up. There's the, that's a good shot of approaching the Drum property. It's clean. There's nothing, no violations that I could see as far as a public nuisance. That is a trailer that is on the side of the right-of-way. It has no tag on it, and I'm unable to determine whose property that is without getting a surveyor out there. And again, we're going up the hill now, approaching the Crumpler Drum property, which was the source of the complaints. On the picture on the left, that open area at one time had a pile of trash that was approximately, I'd say 30 feet in circumference and about five feet high. They've removed it, and they've cleaned the area up. The picture on the right is their home. Has leaves on the roof, but it's their home. And we go to the next picture, and there's the backside of their home. Again, they don't have electricity. They have running water from a creek. They have some solar, little solar lights they bring around, and they have a solar-powered radio that they play all the time. We'll go, continue on. That's all that's left of his trash. The gentleman told me he probably, I don't know how many dumpsters he hauled out, but I spoke with him at the beginning of August after I sent him his five-day letter, and I spoke with him again in October, and he said he hauled away over 50 tandem dump loads of trash. And he did clean his property up. And we'll go to the next picture. That's his barn, and it's well off the roadway, and there's an abandoned camper that he is working on to get rid of, that has, has been on his property for, he told me, over two decades, and he's, he's working on getting rid of it. And we can go to the next one, and that's another one of his outbuildings, well off the roadway. You'll see the speaker. I know in a few of the past emails, there's been a complaint about a radio. He keeps a radio running because someone keeps unplugging his electric fence for his horses, and that's his alarm. When that goes off, he knows his electric fence is off. He's got some tires there. We can go to the next slide. We can go to the next slide. And as this says, the owner's worked to clean up the property, and his work continues. He was out there working Thursday. We continue past Ridley Ranch Road, past his house. We come up on the, I believe it's the Brown property. It is now empty, vacant. There's a truck on the property, and we can go to the next one. That's an old Dodge Durango that's got trash bags piled up on it. We're trying to get in touch with the gentleman that used to live there, get him to take care of that for us. And there's a Suburban that's at the end of the road. That's the end of the right-of-way, basically. And it's got a tag on it. And I can honestly say that I was out there in September of 2019 with Mr. Gibson from Environmental Health on a complaint that he had gotten, and you couldn't go down the right-of-way. There was a lot of cars and stuff packed in it. They have cleaned it up. It's not, it's not perfect, but it's how they live. And they have never been anything but respectful to us, and they've done everything we've pretty much asked them to do. So I just wanted you to have some facts on what's really going on out there.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good report. We took a trip and never left the place, you know? That's good. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number seven, which is a COVID-19 update. We'll call on LeAnn Wisniewicz, our Health and Human Services Director, as well as Doug Gillespie, the Director of Public Services, and Rick French, County Manager.
I will start off with your numbers tonight. And I appreciate Chad working with us, putting these numbers out. We have to give them to him very late, and I do appreciate him waiting on these because they do change very often. So you'll see we've had a tremendous increase in the last few weeks. We're up to 973 cases. The state has the dashboard at 980. We've already talked about how that's, you know, those two aren't going to match because sometimes we're letting them know there's duplicates. We know today there were several retests that were duplicate that will come off as soon as they have time to update it. We grieve for these families, that we have had 10 deaths. And we've got the most hospitalized that we've had. 23 hospitalized currently, some very sick. We hope and pray for these families, that they get the medication and treatment that will bring them back home. We still have 154-plus quarantined, and that's that we know of. We know that when we quarantine whole households, sometimes physicians' offices quarantine whole households, and we don't always have those numbers. So that's why we kind of put that plus to let you know that it's, we know it's more than that. There is 58 at the maximum-security prison. They are having an outbreak within the inmates. We know that they're managing that. They let us know and keep us informed, but they have their own medical treatment team. The state is managing that with them. We know that there was a transfer in of two inmates from another facility that was where that started. So, and you'll see from the graph, I know that's kind of hard to see. If anybody wants this electronically or emailed, I'd be happy to send it. Our greatest number in one day was on 10/14. You'll see, we had 25 positives that day, and we've had three other days with 24. Just to give you an idea, like today, we had 26 tested. We continue to test on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, more often when we need to, but that's pretty much taking care of the times that we're needing to test. And we're still doing that by drive-through for everyone's safety and protection. And we have seen several clusters. We had been blessed and not really seen lots of transmission until the last while as far as clusters. But we have seen some clusters related, of course, one is related to the prison, one with a funeral, a couple in churches, and one with a school. They have any, and let me explain cluster. Cluster is any time there are five or more cases that we can connect the dots. You know, a lot of times, we don't know where it came from, and we're never 100% certain. You know, we can do our contact tracing and get a really good idea, but we definitely, with flu season, we expected this, and we certainly have seen it across North Carolina and across the U.S., across the country for that matter. And I don't know if the other two folks want to give any, you have any questions for me? Doug's coming to give you... We actually still do have supplies, and we're actually doing better on our personal protective equipment. So, and our testing timeframes are looking better. Sometimes even two days turnaround time, so we're very pleased with that.
All right. Well, thank you.
Just real quick. Back in April, we had shut our first responder program for our local volunteer fire departments from running first responder calls with EMS for critical patients unless it was asked for. Because we had that shortage of PPEs, and we also had wanted to try to take care of them and their family member. We worked with Dr. Emmon and Dr. Goodnight, which is our Medical Director and Assistant Medical Director, and we come up with a program. And now, as of this morning at 8:00, they started running some calls again, but they were trained on how to properly go into the house, what to do, and stuff like that. It gave them a little bit more education than what they normally got and followed with us. But like LeAnn said, PPEs are actually pretty good. We're able to get them when we ask for them. We've bought some in the last couple of weeks, but we're stocked up and still pretty good. The other big thing we're seeing, and we talked about it before, is we've got a couple of hospitals that like to go on full diversion because they're full. ICU beds are supposedly full, and so that takes away where we can take those patients and stuff at this time. So we're dealing with that and being on scene with the patients. Or being, going to one hospital, and then they said, no, they can't take the patient. They're full right now. We have to go to another hospital. Any questions?
Doug, with the amount of people that you're having to do that, is that delaying? I know there's delaying the folks that are on the active call.
Yeah, it's delaying us. Yeah, yeah. It's delaying us with, on average, in 2020, we're with a patient from the time we arrived on the scene till the time we get them to the hospital's 48 minutes. So we've got to be a paramedic for 48 minutes. And now we're seeing that slightly increase because we're going here, and then all of a sudden, we've got to divert and go somewhere else. Communication keeps us up to date real good if they are aware of it, but sometimes they're not made aware that the hospital's on the version, so when we call them in. So, yeah, it increases our call time, which increases the time we're with that patient also.
But you're still able to respond the way that you need to to assist in any other matters that...
Yes. Yeah, we have days that we have to use out of county to come in, and we're going to have days like that. We have mutual aid agreements with all the counties. Last night, we had seven calls in seven minutes that ambulance. I actually got up and responded to ambulance to a motor vehicle accident that didn't turn out to be anything. But seven calls in seven minutes, I only got four trucks. So Iardle had to come in and get a couple, and one was a refusal that we got, and then they turned around and went on to another one. I come in off duty and come in and got a truck. And we, Iardle County's doing the same way, Catawba County's doing the same way. We're getting called to stand by at their bases or stand by at the county line for them. Wilkes County, we work together. So, but yeah, we are, we are, yeah, we're, we need some help, and we're working with what we got. I go back to the comment I made for earlier. I'll put my paramedics up against anybody. I've got some young ones that are real good, and I've got some of the seasonal paramedics that are training these young ones to be even better.
Very good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
LeAnn, I may ask the question. How are we doing on our flu vaccines, and are we getting good response to people actively pursuing the vaccine on the flu?
We have. We are doing well. There's still lots of people that have not taken the vaccine, I am sure, but we have plenty of vaccine. We are there available, and we would love to make sure everybody got their vaccine. So, and I know all the medical providers also have that. Some people are choosing to get it when they're at their pharmacy. As long as you get your vaccine somewhere, we are happy about that. But we do. We still have plenty of vaccine. So if anybody has not, it is not too late, but the sooner the better.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot. We'll move on to item number eight on the agenda. Alexandria County School Choice Week Resolution. And I'm going to read that. Alexandria County School Choice Week. Whereas all children in Alexandria County should have access to the highest-quality education possible, and whereas Alexandria County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Alexandria County. And whereas Alexandria County is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Alexandria County has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Alexandria County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize January 24th through January 30th, 2021 as Alexandria County School Choice Week and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Adopted this the second day of November 2020. And this is, resonates all the more with what we've got going on right now. Our public schools have done an outstanding job of, you know, just giving different options for different families. I know we're doing online school right now with our kids, and there's a lot of parents who are spending all day, every day, or just a few days a week, educating their kids and being those teachers. And then you've got our, you know, children that have always been homeschooled, and you've got our private schools and Christian schools. And we've just got a big mix, and that's going to continue into the future. And I think, I think a lot of what you're seeing right now as far as online education's going to continue and expand as the years go by. So I think it's just important to recognize that there's a lot of people out there that go into educating the children of this county, and we appreciate all that they do, public and private, and the ones at home. And I make a motion that we adopt this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number nine. Proclamation declaring December 1st through December 31st, 2020 as Christmas in Bethlehem. And I'll read this. Whereas the Bethlehem Community Development Association has been a longtime supporter of improvements and quality of life issues in the Bethlehem area, and whereas Mount Pisgah Lutheran Church has assumed the duties of organizing the annual Christmas in Bethlehem events formerly handled by the Bethlehem Community Development Association. And whereas Alexandria County wishes to promote events that increase community spirit and offer opportunities for fellowship during the Christmas season. And whereas the Bethlehem Starlighting has been a fixture of the Christmas season for more than 40 years, annually drawing thousands of citizens to the Bethlehem area. And whereas the annual Bethlehem Starlighting will take place on December 5th, 2020. And whereas a live nativity drive-through will occur on December 11th through the 13th, 2020. And whereas these Christmas events promote values and morals which are the binding fiber of this community and any community, and are strongly supported by Alexandria County, area churches, businesses, and citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Alexandria County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare December 1st through December 31st, 2020 as Christmas in Bethlehem. Adopted this the second day of November 2020. And for all those that are wondering, yes, there will be a Starlighting this year. So I make a motion that we approve the proclamation declaring December 1st through December 31st as Christmas in Bethlehem.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will go on to item number 10 on the agenda, which is 2020 Alexandria County Wireless Broadband Expansion Program. Alexandria County requests for proposals. I call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the request for proposals for wireless broadband expansion program that we've been talking about. Bids would be open on December 14th at 4:00. This is the next step, is what we've been talking about, about expanding our program. And all I need is you, the board, to approve this so we can move forward with advertising and for the request for proposals.
I make a motion that we approve opening bids for our wireless broadband expansion program as stated.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll just say this is, you know, an important step, and we need to, we need to keep doing more of this. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right. We'll move on to item number 11 on the agenda, which is approval of 2021 Alexandria County Commissioners Meeting Schedule.
In your packet, you have the 2021 Alexandria County Commissioners Meeting Schedule, also the Consolidated Human Services Board meeting, too, that meets every other month, their next meeting will be January 4th. At this time, all of our meetings are held at 6:00, and they're held here at Alexandria County CBCC, and this needs to be approved for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Alexandria County Commissioners Meeting Schedule for 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say this is not enough neat meetings. We need more, more meetings on here.
I'm smiling.
So all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to item number 12 on the agenda, which is approval of 2021 Alexandria County Holiday Schedule. Again, Rick French, our County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the holiday schedule for the upcoming 2020, 2021, for your consideration tonight, and you have those dates in front of you. We pretty much follow the state schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the holiday schedule.
I'll second that.
Or vacation schedule.
I'll second that. And is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to number 13, Board Appointments and Reappointments. Again, Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. We have one appointment tonight. The Western Piedmont Council of Government Sister Cities Association appoint Larry Yoder for two years.
Do we have to do any kind of background check on that guy?
Yes, sir.
Might both.
Yes, sir, we're definitely going to do that.
I'll make a motion that we approve Mr. Yoder to the Western Piedmont Council of Government Sister Cities Program.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 14, Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 25 through 31. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several budget amendments tonight. The first budget amendment is number 25. That is, the state is, State Board of Elections is going to, is awarding a, basically, a $100 awarding a, basically a $100 bonus for each one-stop worker, actually the one-stop workers and election day workers, which we have thirty-eight one-stop workers and eighty election day poll workers. The state is gonna go back and ask for more funds, and so this budget amendment covers the CARES Act revenue that pays those bonuses for those election workers. Any questions on that one? Okay. Number 26. Is to increase the sheriff's budget for the use of federal equitable share funds received in fiscal year 2021. The funds are used to increase the law enforcement budget. That's the only thing they can be used for. They'll be used to purchase and set up a K-9 transport cage for the current law enforcement K-9. Any questions about that one? Twenty-seven is adjust DSS budget for aging nutrition, revenue allocation, and meet the county local match requirement for expense. CARES Act funding for additional aging nutrition meals requiring no county local match for expense. In-home COG revenue reduction in order to increase revenue for aging nutrition and to decrease the group insurance expense budget in order to cover additional expenses for the age nutrition program. Okay. Yes, okay, no questions there?
No. Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain that one just a little bit to us? The, the whole nutrition, because I mean, not arguing that, just trying to understand that flow a little better?
That'll be discussed during our Consolidated Human Services.
Okay.
Okay. Budget number 28 is to adjust the multi-year grant project for the estimated interest earnings on the CRF, which is the coronavirus relief funds received in advance, and to adjust estimates of expenses, expense reimbursements to be claimed based on revisions of the guidelines and for the various departments that you see in front of you, and that's number 28. Twenty-nine is a follow-up on the report you heard from Mr. Norris earlier. It's to adjust the multi-year capital project budget for the addition of Courthouse Park to the project budget ordinance, and to allocate updated cost estimates to the specific area. The updated cost estimates for Wittenburg Access area include trail construction, parking, lot expansion, and utilities. And that's number 29. That's what you were looking for. And the other. Number 30 is to budget for general fund transfer to the park improvements project. That's the other part of the park, budget amendment for Courthouse Park and Wittenburg Access. That's number 30. And 31 is to increase DSS budget for CARES Act funding received in advance to assist with expenses for child protective services and adult protective services, teleworking from home. Funds will cover equipment. I wouldn't like to strike the word overtime because that's, that's against county policy to pay cop time to employees. That's not how we do that. Personal protective equipment and supplies, and to increase the DSS budget for CARES Act funding received in advance of $100 equipment to foster care families for each foster care child for the months of July, August, and September. Again, the only change would be, with that amendment would be not, do not include the overtime. Please that. We don't pay cop time. Any questions?
So as we approve that one, we need to change the wording, correct?
Yes, but I'm just, we're gonna strike that from the budget amendment.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the budget amendments 25 through 31, and in item number 31, strike the overtime payment, and make the motion to approve all items 25 through 31.
Second that. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number 15, which is the County Manager's Report.
You heard it, we were, have we been talking about applying for Golden Leaf Foundation Funds? Two projects were submitted. One was for Catawba Valley Community College Industrial Systems Program Expansion in Alexandria County for $550,000. The other was for a tank, a water tank in Bethlehem that tied into the water system, the water system study that we're having done, that we were looking also at a sewer line in Bethlehem, but that project, we talked with the Golden Leaf staff, wouldn't qualify. So that's where we are right now. This is, we've submitted the narratives on these projects, and we're hoping that we'll get asked to apply. It's a process for Golden Leaf, it's a little different process than normal grants. The max was $2 million that we could apply for. The other thing, with the storm damage that we've had, we have a number of electrical permits that have to be done. Staff would like to ask that the $70 fee be waived for the, there's about 25 homes, if you're fine with us doing that. I mean, if, I would need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion that we waive that $70 fee, since this is an emergency situation.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. See Marty? Yeah, okay. Motion passes unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. French.
Mr. French, I understood you asked one question. We talked about doing that. Now with so much damage that we've had, and I know that a lot of this stuff can be taken to the landfill from people's homes and everything, are we gonna make any type of adjustment there for those folks?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to our Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting. And. Let me find the agenda for that. Thank you for all being here. County Commissioners Meeting. Okay. We have a public comment for the Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting. Anyone, anyone signs up, has signed up for that. So we'll go on to DSS Adult Services Nutrition Program, and again, we have Leigh Ann Wisna.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And we only have this one other topic since we covered COVID earlier, and we also did the 5310. We wanted to bring to your attention, and I know some of you have heard this from the community, we, in 19 and 20 budget year, we received CARES funding to increase our meals for the nutrition program, congregant and home-delivered. We did have a huge increase in those meals. At early end COVID time, we were trying to keep those individuals home, not having to go to the grocery store, and I think we did a great job with that. Staff worked really hard to, to see that people had food, and we've, we've had several instances where we've had, went on calls, and people did not have adequate food, which is very, very sad in our community and, and the time that we live in. But we, we have to tell you, we did a poor job managing this program. It slipped up on us because we didn't have a very front-end internal process to manage the checks and balances. This has been the same forever and ever, no excuse, but we did not realize the contract was in place, the bills come in before there was good management and monitoring that. These funds started to dwindle quicker than we realized due to the increase in this program, which I'll talk about in just a minute, but we normally have 60 to 70 clients, and the number of clients that we were serving was reaching 100, which is great to serve more community, and there was a greater need during the COVID time. But we realized this was quickly diminishing this budget. Those COVID funds, CARES funds went quick, and then we were back to our standard budget, and we had to drastically cut those meals to try to not have to stop the program before the end of the fiscal year. We didn't do a good job communicating that with our clients and our community. We have since worked to rectify that. The DSS staff, Lynda Clements, has worked very hard to talk to each individual receiving these services and do a survey, because we, as other counties had changed, we had to change the meals that we were providing to keep people in home. So there's three options. There's hot meals, which is preferred, we understand that, but during this time with people restricted, less volunteers, keeping those meals at that temperature became very, very difficult. We even had one day that we had to cancel because the meals were not at the temperature that was required. We certainly don't want anyone to get sick from not having adequately prepared food. We worked with the caterer to rectify that, but we have certainly seen some issues with this program. So we have decreased the meals. We are working to find out what meals are preferred, because there are hot meals, there are shelf-stable, and there are frozen meals. And, and we certainly can't meet everyone's number-one choice, but we're trying to do the best we can to, to get what they need. We're also working with the local food banks, the meals uptown, you know, we're trying to look at all of the community resources and meet the needs, because they are greater than what our budget can do. Right now, currently we have 25 individuals on the waiting list. There's no way our budget will allow us to put those people on the program. The budget revision that you did was us looking internally to move any money that we could possibly from other programs that were being underutilized. So we have done that. We have also reached out to ask the Western Piedmont Council Government, is there any funds that we can access from other counties? We know we've reached out to other counties to see what they're doing in this time of crisis. We are actually doing exactly what Catawba County is doing. We, Lynda and I have talked today to adjust a little bit more, because we are hearing that they want hot meals. I certainly understand that. So we're tweaking that even more to try to meet those needs in January. We hope that we will be able to apply for more funds through the COG. So what we're doing now is kind of to get us a baby step to January. We are also on our second communication with each of those clients. We have called them, talked to them, asked their opinion. We've had two meetings with community resources, our volunteers, and we sent out communication today so that hopefully they understand better why we've done the things we've done. So hopefully going forward, we will do a better job with this. We know, we've also heard their complaints about the contract that we have. We've also talked to staff about how things have been done in the past, and in the past it's been very unsuccessful. So we're gonna try our best to improve that. They've looked at all kinds of different catering options that have not panned out. We've got six months before next budget year starts, so we're gonna aggressively look for maybe more bids when we put this out to bid for a contractor. Our entire grant is about $85,000 for the whole year. So ties our hands a lot with the cost of per meal. So we hope to do better going forward. Yes, sir?
What, what does school system provide in so many meals now, too? I know we're talking kids and adults, but I don't know, it seem, would seem like that, you know, we're providing meals, and a meal's a meal, and is there any way to partner with them to make both processes more efficient?
Certainly willing, certainly willing to talk to anyone. That may be an option, because the program does have some hard rules and fast rules. So it has to be a licensed kitchen. It ha, I mean, there's lots of requirements, like the mobile cafe would not meet the requirements for this. We have even talked to them about collaborating, and we could do, we could take those meals in addition, too, but it could not be, it would not meet this requirement, because it's not a licensed kitchen. Although they do a great job, it is, certainly meets my standard to go eat or eat out. This is a federal program, and there's some major concrete rules. But I think the school system is great. My other thought was even the prison, because the prison provides, now staff told us that they attempted to do that several years back, and it never worked. Doesn't mean it won't work this time. So we're, we're definitely gonna start now with conversations, because we, we're hearing them. You know, the, the quality, some of the frozen meals, we've heard, is the same thing over and over. Some of our clients like the shelf-stable, because they can, it's convenient, it's, it's like, things like sealed fruit, things like that, soups, canned things, but then some do not like that. The congregant meal site participants tend to be okay with that and frozen meals, but our home-delivered population, which right now is 34 individuals, really need those hot meals. But we've also seen a huge need for volunteers, too, in that area, because our volunteers are the retired population that we're also trying to protect. So it's been a very difficult time to, to balance that, getting the meals there, hot, at the right temperature. You only have a certain timeframe to do that with, and we only have a couple of staff members. So we're very, it's a very small program. We have also heard them, we were having them to pick up their hot meal on Monday, and then the shelf-stable and frozen on Tuesday. We heard them say we don't want to come out twice, and so this week we implemented that, that all that is delivered on Monday together to make it more convenient. So we are trying. Are we there yet? No. Are we learning? Yes. And we're listening and trying to hear and improve this program. We've had some internal staff changes that we've done to hopefully facilitate this process as well.
And the mobile ki, the mobile cafe doesn't reach standards?
Yes, sir.
Because I know they're talking about going to five days a week, so.
And they're doing a lot. They, we really, we had them to do a presentation, virtual, we're meeting, our staff meetings are virtual, with the Department of Social Services, and they are doing tremendous work, tremendous work, and meeting some of the needs that, some of the same clientele, but some other, other individuals, too, in areas. I didn't realize how much they were, I mean, they're going to the Food Pantry in Hidnite, they're going to Stony Point. They're really doing a lot of outreach, but as far as a licensed kitchen and meeting the, this program, it does not. We can, when we have looked at that, we're talking about that, doing that in addition, too, but right now, they really have their hands full feeding the clientele's that they have. So between the two of us, we're, we're certainly trying to, to meet those needs. Now, as far as adding those additional participants, we will continue to look for grant funds. I, I am hopeful there may be more CARES funding. Because I, I don't like having 25 people asking for food. asking for food, and we have to leave them on a waiting list. That's not acceptable.
Well, now those people, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, I apologize for that. Those people that you have on that list, are those people that you could tell the mobile cafe that these folks need some assistance and have the meals that, that they could deliver to them? Can you not do something like that? You know, Larry needs something to eat down there, he lives down there on 90.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
And we've even talked about, you know.
I'm just, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and we've talked about even, you know, a lot of our own staff volunteer on their lunch hour and, and doing just that. And, and we are just in conversations with them. I think that's a great idea, though. They are very willing to work with us.
Well, I know one of the things that we did where I worked there in Catawba County is that you would take, on the time that you were supposed to deliver meals, and there at our company, we would go and deliver the meals on wheels there in, in Conover area. We had a specific area that we worked, and we'd take that on, and there'd be two of us, we'd take turns about each day, going and making the deliveries. I mean, it might be something that you could find somebody that was in, well, that is, you know, takes, it's an hour for lunch in, in industry. That could take that time off and assist you in that program. I mean, that's, you know, you work out, you know, talk with economic development, see if you can meet and talk with the industry about it, because a lot of these folks would be glad to spend some of their time feeding the people.
I think you're right. And we've got great churches, so.
We do have.
Thank you, Leigh Ann.
Our Consolidated Board Meeting.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, well, we will adjourn out of our Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting, and we need to have a closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, five and six contractual, contractual and personnel issues. We will come back into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment, and I will make a motion that we move into closed session.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.